When you subscribe to WROK on YouTube, you never miss a meeting.
So we are going to begin the October 22nd, 2021 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting. We're going to call it to order. October 25th, rather. This says 22nd, but we mean 25th. All right, we're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Hunt, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can.
We all gather here this evening for a singular reason. We all love this great city and are willing to dedicate our time and service of it to ensure that Royal Oak remains a great place to live, work, and play. We seek to make certain that we leave our city in a better condition than we found it. And as we stand here today in our centennial year, we must be thoughtful of the residents that will succeed us in our next 100 years. How we make decisions is as important as the decisions themselves. As we meet this evening to discuss the issues that will determine the future of our community, let's strive to set an example that will inspire our next generation with how we enter into thoughtful debate, how we address one another, and how we find the common ground within each of us. Let us provide an example of how well-meaning individuals come together to strengthen the community and create a successful future. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are now at item four in our agenda, which is the presentation of the Mind Over Matter, often known as the MOM, fundraising check. Julie Farhat, welcome back again this year. We're eager to hear. I know it's been a tumultuous 18 months like everybody, and I know you've been hard to work, carrying on the good work that you do. So the floor is yours.
You're my best. Pardon me, my first COVID speech through a mask. I'll do my best to an NCA. Hi there, my name is Julie Farhat, and I'm a lifelong Royal Oak resident. I started the local nonprofit Mind Over Matter, lovingly referred to as MOM, after losing my mother to schizophrenia and suicide in 2005. And although I was grief-stricken at the time, I knew I wasn't meant to be devastated. I decided to turn my pain into purpose in an effort to prevent others from going through what my family and I went through. In 2006, my siblings and I started the MOM race for mental health awareness and suicide prevention here in Royal Oak. The 5K charity run-walk is always the first Saturday in May and starts and ends at Star JC Park, right across the street from where my family lived for 20 years. The event brings families, friends, survivors, and weekend warriors together for a feel-good community event to broach the often unspoken topics of mental illness and suicide. For the second year in a row, we had to host a virtual event due to COVID. We needed to get creative to keep the MOM race going and continue the much-needed dialogue. Believe it or not, in 2021, many people are still uncomfortable talking about mental illness or suicide. They have a misconception that it's something that happens to other families and other communities. But the truth is, it happens here. But mental illness is common and treatable. One in five Americans will experience depression, anxiety, or another mental health condition in their lifetime. Sadly, many people do not seek behavioral health care due to the stigma attached to it. Left untreated, mental illness can result in disability and even death. Suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in this country, killing more than 45,000 Americans each year. Suicide is complicated and difficult to understand. It's especially hard to prevent something when you can't predict it. However, we all have a role to play when it comes to educating ourselves and preventing suicide. Participating in the annual MOM race is just one way you can get involved, learn the facts, and provide much-needed support to those in need. We had a great turnout for the 16th Annual MOM Race on Saturday, May 1st, with 1,144 registrants from Michigan and beyond. Commemorative keep-on truck and T-shirts were shipped to 30 US states to help spread the MOM mission further than ever. Participants were encouraged to run, bike, walk, or hike, and get outside for 30 minutes of exercise. Spending time in nature makes you feel connected to the planet. And exercise isn't just good for your physical health, it's an instant mood booster. Exercise is also an important part of any self-care strategy. Plus, goal-setting is a great way to look toward the future. With the support of 32 business sponsors and other donors, I'm pleased to announce that the 2021 MOM race raised another $45,000 for local brain research, suicide prevention programming, and crisis intervention services, bringing our fundraising grand total to half a million dollars. Here to say a few words about how the 2021 MOM race funds will be used are representatives from the University of Michigan Depression Center and Common Ground. Dennis from No Resolve, our third MOM race charity, was not able to be here tonight, so I'll be reading a brief statement on his behalf. But before I do that, I wanted to let you know that Saturday, November 20th, is International Survivors of Suicide Lost Day. A day where survivors from all over the globe come together to find connection, understanding, and hope through their shared experiences. If you are a fellow survivor of suicide, especially a newly bereaved survivor, I encourage you to get involved. Please go to isosld.afsp.org to find a local event near you. For Royal Oak residents, the nearest Survivor Day event is happening at Affirmations in Ferndale. Okay, this is the statement from No Resolve. Again, Dennis could not be here tonight. Dear Julie, Mayor Fournier, MOM racers, city commissioners, and citizens of Royal Oak, thank you so much for your generous donation to support our mission and programs once again through this year's MOM race. No Resolve's mission is to promote mental health and prevent youth suicide through outreach, advocacy, and education. Our suicide prevention programs for schools have reached more than 140,000 teens in Macomb and Oakland County since 2007. We also run a youth-driven after-school activity center for teens in Shelby Township called The Shed, which opened shortly before the pandemic began. During the pandemic, we offered virtual programming for teens that included a support group, presentations, youth-led videos for schools, and we also began developing a new program called the Detour Project, which is designed to connect teens to brain health through the arts. For families, we launched a podcast and continued offering our Survivors of Suicide Lost support groups in a virtual format. We opened our doors for some limited and COVID-appropriate in-person programming this summer, and we will continue offering virtual and hybrid options to expand our reach moving forward. With skyrocketing rates of depression, anxiety, and psychological distress, addressing mental health has never been more important, and we could not carry out our mission or programs without you. Thank you again for your support through the MOM race. Sincerely, Dennis Leggio, founder and executive director of No Resolve. So next, again, I'm going to be presenting each of the charities with $15,000 from this year's race. And here to say a few words about how the proceeds will be used by the University of Michigan Depression Center is Dr. Stephen Taylor.
Well, it's a great delight and with great gratitude that I come here before you, Mayor, and commissioners to accept another MOM race check. This is a wonderful tradition for 16 years. I'm also profoundly grateful to Julie Farhat for organizing this and really taking her personal tragedy and turning it into something that is of tremendous benefit for the community, for the world at large, because this work goes out in the research that we do and in the consciousness raising that occurs through the race. As Julie said very eloquently, this is so important to raise awareness about mental illness and about the possibilities and the fact that treatments work. In the Depression Center at the University of Michigan Psychiatry, we are both treating and providing early interventions to try to stop this illness before it begins in some cases, and then, of course, research to try to understand better ways to treat it. There's many treatments that we have, and they work very well. They don't work well enough because obviously we're still suffering. Mental illness is still in our community. It's something that touches everyone's life. Everyone has been touched by mental illness at one point in their lives or will be. So it's something that, like, the MOM race is an event that is really an important part of my career because I've been here for 16 years now and very much appreciating the support, the support of the citizens of Royal Oak, that they are willing to open their, or in some cases, well, really close their streets off for a Saturday morning for this wonderful event. So we are going to be continuing our struggle in terms of trying to find better ways to treat, improve the research, try to understand mental illness, depression, psychosis, and suicide, and try to make our world better. And it's much to the work of Julie and the MOM race that makes her job just a little bit easier. So thank you again.
Thanks, Steve. And next up is Jeff Kepesinski from Common Ground.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners. Thank you so much for allowing us to have this race in your streets. Thank you for allowing Common Ground to be located here in Royal Oak with our sanctuary and runaway and homeless youth programming. I want to thank Julie and her family, all of the sponsors that put this effort on. Through the years, this money has made a great impact on the community that we serve, the people that we serve. Whether it was extending our chat and text service a few years ago, this year, our focus is on launching a Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center. We feel that this is a way to address needs, hopefully before they get to that level, that will be located somewhere in the southern part of Oakland County, near Royal Oak, very accessible for the residents of Royal Oak. Again, we are so pleased to be here, so grateful to you, so grateful to Julie. Thank you so much.
Thanks for having me.
Well, Julie, how about first off, we give a round of applause for Julie. Year in and year out, she works so hard to bring so much good in this community. And I can tell you, you know, the last couple of years, we've missed the actual run. You know, it's been a virtual event, but I mean, now more than ever, after what we've all gone through, how important it is to not just attack the science and, you know, the diagnosis part of it and the research behind what causes depression, but also, you know, the triage that Common Ground brings to the table as well. When people are at a low moment, you know, they have the chat, they have the text, and they have, you know, it sounds like plans to have an urgent care, which, you know, shows that because of your work, there's real things happening in this community that can bring so much benefit to us and help us avoid so much tragedy. And as a father of three, you know, this is really, I think, important as a parent. It's important as a mayor, and I think this commission values everything that you do. And we can't highlight and emphasize enough how grateful we are for your work, Julie. So thank you. All right, that brings us to item number five, which is the approval of the agenda. I know we have a couple requests to... I would like to add a library board appointment, and I know that the appointments team had something to add to the agenda as well. So if anybody would like to take a stab at the agenda, Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of the agenda with the addition of the library board appointment. The Appointments Committee recommendations are on the consent agenda. And when we get down to that point, I'll make a motion that we remove it from the consent agenda and get it on the regular agenda. So that's where we can handle the appointments other than the library board appointment. But my motion is to approve the agenda with the addition of the library board appointment.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perush. I think that will work. We have a second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion on the agenda? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Opposed and favored, say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, this brings us to item six, which is a discussion and update regulatory ordinance regarding exotic and wildlife species as requested by Commissioner Douglas, with support from Commissioners Perush and Collo. All right, yeah, we have a lot of activity, a lot of global news, not necessarily for all the right reasons. But, you know, Mr. Brake, I think that, you know, we talked about this. I think the community, you know, kind of if we can take this opportunity to get a status update on, you know, where we're at, what kind of things are at our, you know, disposal, and just kind of the complexities surrounding everything between state and local law, that would be great.
Okay, absolutely. All right, well, good evening, Mayor Fournier and city commissioners. So it's discussed by the mayor that we'll recap what has occurred, talk about the current ordinance and where we go from here from a staff perspective. So I'm going to turn this over to Chief O'Donohue, who will discuss the incident of the, as we have pictured above, the African caracal cat that disappeared on some of the monitors, but nevertheless, there it is. So with that, Chief O'Donohue will make some introductory comments, then I'll bring the floor back to me and continue the discussion from here.
Sure, Mayor, city commission. October 13th, we received a call in the early morning hours about possible cougar sighting and some loose cats. We were familiar that there are these caracal cats that live on the 700 block of East LaSalle. Our animal control officer immediately responded to that home, found that, or contacted the homeowner, rather, found out that, asked her to check. She reported that two of the cats were missing, and it appears the cage had been left open all night. So we began to search the area with the owner. One of the cats was located relatively quickly. The owner was actually driving with the animal control officer and was able to approach the cat. She couldn't get a leash on it, but was able to convince it to walk home with her. That animal is re-secured. The other animal, it's a little bit more elusive, and we were unable to find it initially. These animals are nocturnal, so we assumed during the day we wouldn't have much luck. We had a number of officers out right before dusk in the area. We got a call about 10 o'clock or so. The homeowner thought he might have seen it in his backyard. We responded, and the cat was in fact there. The officers were able to just kind of set up a perimeter, but not really approach the animal. The owner of the cats had arranged for a wildlife specialist trapper to be in the area. That individual responded, and after some, a little bit of coaxing, they were able to get the animal caged. This was the third time these cats have gotten out. They'd gotten out, a couple of them got out a couple of weeks earlier, and then it sounds like there was a report of them out in the summer, but they were brought back in relatively quickly. These cats are not regulated as an exotic animal by the DNR, so they are legal to possess and own. We've had some tough conversations with the homeowner, who dearly loves these animals. But, and after some back and forths, she agreed that she should move the animals out of the city and maybe try to find a better and more appropriate environment for these type of animals, and that's what she's done.
Any questions for the chief on the status? Commissioner Douglas.
So the animals are no longer in the city?
Correct.
And won't be coming back?
That is the understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the ordinance that we have in place that regulates the keeping of pets, which is 484-13, and it specifies very broadly animals, but it also refers to other species such as birds, bees, and pets. The key phrase that's in there is the failure of the owner, caretaker, or custodian to keep animals confined on the pets. So that's where the person was cited under that ordinance. So the question has come in, do we need a much more robust ordinance that is much more specific? My recommendation at this point is not to react to a single species, but rather to do a comprehensive review. And in this review, this involves, and this is a time-consuming process, but I'll give you kind of from a broad brush overview what these phases will entail. The first phase is to educate residents about what the ordinance says and does, because probably for the average resident is not familiar with this particular ordinance. And talk about the desired outcomes to understand the underlying values from the general public. And that part is important to get that information. Phase two is to investigate alternatives. We should engage interest groups in specific areas and hold issue academies of residents who are especially interested in this issue. They would be able to learn about animal control legal process and help develop recommendations. Because I anticipate that not only if we're talking about cats such as this, which is not an exotic animal, there are other animals that are legal to own in Michigan, that when you talk about reptiles and other carnivores and the like. So phase three would be to hold a public engagement on proposed revisions, open houses, web page, WROK segment, surveys, and the like. The outcome would be forward to all comments received to the commission as part of the consideration of the revisions. In this, I would anticipate that when you start talking about animals, our beloved pets that many of us have, that it brings about different constituencies. They have different needs. And in talking with staff, specifically Chief O'Donohue, and I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, because my tenure is just a year and a half here, but there really hasn't been a robust review of an animal ordinance. And it also gets into, there's probably known cases where people are responsible pet owners, and there have not been any issues. Do those instances, do we grandfather them? So if you get some sense of, as you get into this topic, that there's many different elements that is worth careful consideration. I think, so this is my recommendation, to do a robust review. Hopefully, this is not a recurring event, but I commend the Royal Oak Police Department, especially our animal control officer, who handled this very diligently, was able to bring some resolution without any danger at all whatsoever to the public and with the greatest amount of transparency and the like. But from not keeping this from happening again, I can tell you from my professional experience of the community where I came from, it was reptiles. The other item that's usually a discussion point is you get into livestock. Now, there is a provision that does allow where you can keep livestock. It's very broad and talks about all different animals and things like that, goat, sheep, horses, and the like. In checking with the city clerk's office, someone that wants to keep livestock is that you have to seek a permit. So over the last eight years, there has been 34 of these permits that have been sought, and they have all been for chickens. So again, from another community, that was probably the single most controversial issue was chickens and how many chickens that you could keep. And so, again, not to make this unwieldy and cumbersome, there's many different elements that come out of this discussion. So that's why, as opposed to, we could probably bring a model ordinance and pass it immediately. The problem is, it's not engaging, educating the public, getting that input, talking to the different stakeholders and that, with the many different elements that comes with pet ownership and responsible pet ownership. I think it's incumbent upon us to having that robust discussion, but I think that's a fair question to ask. City, what are you doing about this? What is the plan of action? So that's my recommendation to you. Happy to bring that back at the November 8th commission meeting. And let's set some dates and talk about some specifics. But that's my recommendation to you. And we've had a lot of discussion with staff of different varieties that come up. Because if we single out the cats, there's other animals that are out there, other carnivore-type of animals of hybrid dogs. It's according to a news article that you can keep coyotes. You can keep red foxes in the state of Michigan. You can even keep alligators. Again, this is according to a news report. It's not my source. But again, here's the odd sort of nuances that are out there that fall beyond the reach of the state of Michigan of what they deem exotic animals. In the case of this species, the large breeds, the large cats, lions, tigers, cheetahs, panthers, those are deemed exotic. That animal is not. That's where it's fall through those cracks, and it comes back to the local community to provide those sort of regulations. But again, I'm very cautious of just having a knee-jerk reaction and opening up some unknown element or whatever it may be. So I'm giving you kind of a flavor of, and I can tell you from my professional experience of issues that I've dealt with in past communities and had some experience of raising dogs myself, so bringing that personal perspective. So that's what I want to outline, but happy to, whatever you so wish, but bring that up at the November 8th meeting, and let's begin that discussion and move that forward. But if there's any other direction that you wish to give myself or staff this evening, we would be welcome to carry that out.
So what I hear, Mr. Brake, just so I understand, we have, you know, instead of having a knee-jerk reaction, the recommendation is that we look at all the gears that are turning. Because even in the city, we have three gears. We have the dangerous animal ordinance.
Correct.
We have 484-13, which is like your pets, and then we have livestock ordinance.
Right.
So all of those kind of, you know, you got to sort through it versus just, you know, throwing spaghetti at the wall to try to fix something that, is it a problem? Is it an incident? You know, okay, Commissioner Perush?
I think this is a good approach. I really do. Because those three ordinances, my recollection is they're all pretty old. We haven't amended them in my memory, and I can't remember ever an incident like this. Now, we say that, and then we're going to have another one next week. But on the other hand, this is not something that is an urgent matter that we need to address. We can have some time to do it right. But the question I have is that, when I read about it and we heard about this, I was, immediately I thought, she's developing potentially a breeding operation in a single-family zone. What does the zoning ordinance have to do with this? We have animal care facilities in the city. The animal care facility that's up on Delamere, we've had other ones in other locations, but those are in industrial zones or large commercial zones, not in residential zones. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't also take a look at our zoning order to see if it needs to be tweaked? Because to my mind, this is that kind of an operation, even though from an animal control perspective might have been okay, I just don't think it belongs in a single-family zone. So I think perhaps we ought to include a look at that as well to make sure that our zoning ordinance doesn't need to be tweaked in some way to kind of limit where we want these facilities to be, if they're in fact going to be in the community. So I guess I would request that you take a look at that as well.
And that's a good point. If I could respond, and so here's kind of one of the nuances that go along with that. If we exclude breeding of any animals, so in the livestock portion, you can keep rabbits. That's part of that, probably a lesser known. So if someone intends to breed rabbits, or you have a dog fancier that is breeding dogs. So these are the, obviously, the kind of the nuances that we have to take into consideration, but perhaps flagged as part of these animals that are not regulated by the state where we have a prohibition and furthermore, say, not allow any breeding of such animals as well.
Okay.
Commissioner Douglas.
No, I really appreciate the thoughtful response and not just overreacting to a widely-publicized, although kind of a standalone event. I think revisiting the ordinance is good, but with a mind toward not creating a whole bunch of solutions in search of problems, but really just making sure it's tight and it's clear, it promotes public safety, and folks know what the rules are. But I know that there's been some of those chicken debates in other communities that have just gone, you know, completely nuclear. And I feel like we've done pretty well here with our kind of more flexible policy.
Yeah, yeah, and so I'm not intending to create that sort of problem. But I can tell you that if you had firsthand exposure to that dialogue is the point that I was making.
No, I think this is the right way to go. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out too, the Detour Zoo is our neighbor. They're here in the city, and they've reached out, and they're ready and willing to help us through this process also. Now, trusting the experts is going to be the best way to move forward here.
Very good. Anybody else? All right, well, thank you very much for that update. I also think it's a good approach. I think you want to avoid the unattended consequences of, you know, trying to solve a problem that can create a whole nother set of problems. So I think it's good that we look at it comprehensively. And given the fact that the animals are now out of town, we don't have to worry about, you know, an immediate threat that buys us some time to do it right. Okay. All right. Well, that brings us to the consent agenda. I understand we want to take off item C.
Seven.
Seven? Oh, am I skipping seven? Oh, my goodness. Yes, I am skipping seven. Goodness gracious. My pen bled over.
Are you guys okay with that? Do you want to skip public comment?
All right, not intentionally. We have public comment coming up as number seven. And just a few ground rules to begin with. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issues, both on the agenda or not. As there are no public hearings scheduled for tonight, this will be the only time for you to address the city commission. I ask that comments be directed to the commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor. Come up to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please be mindful that name and address for the record. Please be mindful that we do want to hear from anyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes, and we have a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. Typically, we don't respond directly to questions during public comment, however, we are taking notes. So when the item is discussed, we'll make sure those questions get answered, and if it's not on the agenda, your question not related to any agenda item, then staff, I know, takes notes, and they follow up as appropriate. And if you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. Email's often a great way, 24 hours a day, to get your message out to us ahead of meetings or after meetings, and we appreciate your feedback. So with that, who's first? Okay, we'll go with Mr. Allison.
Jim Allison, State Representative, 1309 Mohawk, City of Royal Oak. I just wanted to jump in on your discussion on the animal ordinance. We did revise our dangerous dog ordinance, I would think, 2009. It was a very comprehensive review, based on another incident we had in town, where we all decided as a group, as a commission, that we needed to tighten that ordinance up, and we did. And it's a very good ordinance. As a matter of fact, it's used as the model in many communities in the city of, or in the state of Michigan. Because I used that ordinance quite diligently when I was going for my other animal rights ordinances that I'm working on in Lansing. So it's a good ordinance, it's a good place to start, and as I suggested to Mr. Colwell this morning, this afternoon, that would be a good place to start. You could probably get by, there's probably enough language in that ordinance that with a few tweaks and a few additions, you don't have to rewrite and get yourself, because the last thing you need is another animal ordinance. Just take the animal ordinance you've got, make sure it fits the conditions you're living with right now, and I think you'll be fine. It is a good ordinance, very effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. All right, who's next? Yes, ma'am. Kathy?
Yep. Forgive the teacher, I mean. Would you pass things to tell me for that? I'm a teacher. Retired. May I take this off?
Yes, to speak, yeah, for three minutes.
My name is Catherine Howell. My husband Larry and I have lived in Royal Oak for nearly 50 years, in two Royal Oak homes. Our current address is 1026 Pinehurst Avenue. In 2006, my husband and I donated $1,000 to a project spearheaded by the Royal Oak Memorial Society to move our war memorial from its then-location in a parking lot surrounded by parking meters, and backing up to an alley with garbage dumpsters, to a more respectful and dignified setting. We felt honored to contribute to this cause, which was overwhelmingly supported by fellow Royal Oakers. It was our clear understanding that the move was to be a final, permanent relocation to an area designated as a city park, protected against any changes without a vote of the citizens. It is with great dismay that we have witnessed you, our current commission, take actions defying these agreements of the past without a vote of the citizens. This feeling of wrongdoing was validated by two levels of course in your failed attempt to prevent the issue from being put on the November ballot. In a showing of good faith and transparency, I ask you to make public the amount of tax dollars that were spent on attorney fees for those court cases. My understanding is that the fees were $36,000. This in addition to the $40,000 already spent to move the memorial. How unfortunate that the political signs encouraging a "for the ordinance" vote on the ballot proposal say, "Vote for Vets," implying that such a vote would show support for veterans, when actually it is intended for supporting citizens' rights. However, equally misleading are the signs encouraging and against the ordinance vote, which say, "Save Our Park," implying that if the ordinance passes, the whole park is in jeopardy. Not so. The park will still be there. This past spring, I wrote a letter with a copy individually addressed to each of you. The letter included options of how to respond to me: postal mail, phone number, email address. With the exception of Pat Perusch, I never heard from any of you, not even an acknowledgement of the receipt of my communication. How disappointing. One hundred years ago, our city founders created a seal for our new city. This seal proudly hung on the wall behind the commission table. I'm, one more sentence and I'm done. This seal proudly hung on the wall behind the commission table in your chambers in the old city hall. On the seal were the Latin words "Vivimus servire," which in English mean, "We live to serve." Let us all, citizens and elected officials alike, live by those words as we move forward to make decisions for this town that we all love.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Howell. All right, who's next? Mr. Karloski.
Rick Karloski, 419 Virginia. I am here to respond to a couple of things from the last commission meeting. First off, there was the implication that some of the things that were brought up by Pat Lindell and myself regarding the budget are out of whack or misleading information. Everything that was stated by her and by me was in your budget report. We didn't make up anything. This is what your financial director put in. Now, you all had a chance to review it, to vote on it, and you approved it. If you don't agree with it, you shouldn't have approved it. You should have had it modified. But don't come back now and say that what we're saying is wrong, because it's not. Go back to, I invite everybody in Royal Oak to go to the website and look it up for themselves. Nothing that we said is out of tune what was in that report. Secondly, there is some, there was a bit of a town hall meeting at one of the local neighborhood associations, where it was stated that there's no discussion to put about modifying single-family home zoning to allow for duplexes and auxiliary buildings to be put in more widespread than they are, or even allowed. Again, we have documents, we have quotes from the planning commission meetings, and from the mayor himself saying that this is what you guys want to do. Fine, if this is what you want to do, run on it. But don't say that you're not planning anything, or this hasn't come up for review, or there's no current plans, because of, obviously, there are. The fact that the plan has not been finalized and brought to the commission and debated yet does not mean that you're not thinking about it. The biggest problem with this is, if you go ahead and change the ordinances, people will not, there is no way that the neighborhood's going to be able to fight it, because it will be administratively taken care of. There won't be a letter out for, even to 300, the 300-yard rule, for anybody to get up, to get up the neighborhood to fight or comment on any proposal. And frankly, I don't see why a neighborhood has to rise up with pitchforks and torches to put down something that is already banned by city ordinances, unless you guys are going to change it. So just a couple of clarifications there, and I hope we can go forward from, after the election. And if we want to change it, at least have the people vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karloski. Who's next? Mr. Collins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city commissioners. My name is Dennis Collins. I reside at 2716 Trafford. I have been the chairman of the Vote Yes on Proposal Four Committee for the past several months, and I'm here tonight to advocate for the passage in this Vote Yes by our citizens of Proposal Four, which is our all-important renewal of our public safety millage. That will be a millage of 3.975 mils for five years. So it is not a forever millage. It will be a millage that will be up for review by the voters again in five years. In the past 10 years, it has been passed twice, and I'm hopeful and urge a yes vote on Proposal Four. The purpose of the millage is plainly stated in the millage language in one sentence. The levy, if approved, would defray the general expenses and liabilities of the city for police, fire, and emergency medical services only, and will allow Royal Oak to maintain core services and staffing levels. This will cost the average taxpayer approximately $393. To me, that's the bargain of the century. That is less than your annual internet and cable television bill. For that, you receive outstanding services by our police, firefighters, and EMS personnel. Citizens should know what happens if it is not voted and approved. Well, there'll be an $11 million hole in the budget. It will probably end up impacting all city departments. And having done that budget myself for 14 years, I calculated it'll come to about 20% citywide. But people should not vote out of fear. They should vote to accomplish something positive, and I give them three reasons. Vote Yes on Four to fully fund our police, fire, and EMS services to provide safety and security, not only to us individuals, but to our entire community. Vote Yes on Proposal Four to give our police officers and firefighters the equipment, training, and resources to serve us, in essence, to save us when that's needed. And finally, vote Yes on Four to thank our 76 police officers and 52 firefighters, and the civilian staff of both departments, for the outstanding job that they do each and every day. On a personal note, I come from a police and fire family. My father, my grandfather, and uncle were all police officers, and my brother retired as captain from the Detroit Fire Department. It's been a personal privilege for me to lead this committee, and in a small way, help and assist in the excellent public service that we have. We have a great police, fire department, and EMS services. Let's keep it that way. Vote Yes on Proposal Four on your absentee ballot or on November 2nd at the polls. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take this off, I'll shut my glasses. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, Royal Oak. A transmittal letter included in the budget states, "By December 31, 2021, staff will be compiling a request for Proposal Four document to aid in facilitating the selection of a consultant to conduct a comprehensive evaluation of the city's development approval and permits process, such as, but not limited to, rezoning special use approvals and development approval." This sounds like another step, along with the master plan revisions, toward implementing the elimination of single-family zoning. The voters need to understand that this will fundamentally change the character of Royal Oak as we know it. This is all part of the socialist agenda, beginning at the national, county, and local levels. By the way, why is it necessary to have so many consultants? I suggest that it is to provide cover for you in order to avoid making decisions that would be attributed to the commission alone. You have inflated the city staff with assistance, exceeded the borrowing limits of the city charter, entered into no-bid contracts, sold property for $1, and given $5 million incentive to the developer for what is now the Henry Ford Clinics building, that was initially intended to be an office building that would provide 700 lunch customers for the downtown restaurants. I still have not received an answer to whether or not the development agreement precludes selling the building to Henry Ford Clinics, a nonprofit, that would eliminate the property tax revenue on the building. It is definitely time for a change of leadership on the commission in order to return to nonpartisan commission. Thank you. Does anybody have a comment before I sit down? Thank you.
All right, who's next? In the back.
Good evening. My name is Bill Barnes. I reside at 1504 North Connecticut. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, and the Royal Oak voters. I address my remarks to the voters. What is at stake in the coming election? Is Royal Oak at a historic turning point? In years past, Royal Oak was a balanced environment that drew investments and confidence our way. But that has changed. Our master plan for a pleasant Royal Oak is no longer being followed. The ratio of towers to gardens has been disrupted. Why dissolve zoning ordinances to disfigure quiet, tree-lined residential neighborhoods into dense, tightly-packed high-rises and overcrowded car-lined streets? Ladies and gentlemen, ask yourselves, what is missing from the current commission? Allow me to introduce you to an alternative: the A-Team. In order of importance, here is what is missing. First, the leadership, integrity, and discipline of Tom Roth, candidate for mayor. The financial acumen, sardonic wit and wisdom of Rick Karloski, who has been a keen civic participant. Also, the ever-accessible, affable, thoughtful, and engaging Pam Lindell. The tireless legal expertise and broad commercial experience of Royal Oak entrepreneur Derrick George. Lastly, and certainly least, is yours truly, Bill Barnes. Steadfast in my belief in the untapped talents, ideas, and skills of Royal Oak residents, who, if listened to, can revive our city's charm and invigorate the mood and culture of the community we call home. Finally, it has come to my attention that seniors feel threatened by Royal Oak's overspending. They are afraid, genuinely afraid, that high taxes will force them out of their own homes. Let us listen to the hopes and fears of our people. Let us address their concerns with serenity and courage. Together, we can do this.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Phone once. Yep, in the back. Nope, sorry, I had her in the back. Yep. No, you do that, and then you can go next.
Dr. Wallace Anderson, 404 Mount Vernon Boulevard. Tonight, I'm going to address my remarks about citizen participation and communication to both the commission and the citizens who are watching via WROK. There's been much said about the amount of community engagement when designing the downtown park. The full report is on romi.gov and makes interesting reading. Myself, I don't think that 1,500 to 1,800 comments in a city of almost 60,000 is remarkable, but even if it is, more important is who is participating. The task force of nine consisted of three commissioners, three mayoral appointments, two representatives of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and one rep from the DDA, heavily weighted toward the incumbents' preferences. And in the community engagement report, it's clear that a significant number of participants were either commission members or city employees. There is no way to tease out who responded to the survey, of course, but I'm guessing that many of the people who participated in other ways are among the respondents. That's a built-in bias here, favoring what the commission wants rather than the broader community. community. Moreover, I know from personal experience that the commission only appoints people to committees and boards if those people pass the litmus test of agreeing with the commission. Back in 2017, I volunteered for the new senior task force. I was told in a public meeting by Commissioner Douglas that I wasn't a suitable candidate, specifically because I didn't agree with the commission. You current commissioners and mayor have a history of stifling dissent. You exclude and actually belittle people who don't agree with your agenda. This commission also significantly manipulates rules, both the formal ordinances and principles and bylaws. The length of the consent agendas, meeting after meeting, which often include large expenditures, suggests strongly that the Open Meetings Act is not respected. The A-Team candidates are a group of five independent thinkers who agree on a few basic principles for the governing body of Royal Oak, including financial transparency and real citizen engagement. Yes, it's cumbersome and messy to engage your community widely in public decisions, especially when those decisions affect taxpayers' pocketbooks. And yes, you don't always have decisions go your way. Yes, open communication and decision-making are messy and time-consuming, but the A-Team, Tom, Pam, Rick, Derek, and Bill, are committed to these principles.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you can be next.
Good evening, my name is John Williams. I live at 17043 Coral Gables Street in Southfield, Michigan. Been a resident there for 34 years. I'm a 12-year member of the American Legion Post in Royal Oak and the Disabled American Veterans Chapter 19 of South Oakland County, which also meets now in Royal Oak. I'm here tonight, you guys really seem to be on fire to cement that memorial monument in place across the street. You keep pouring concrete like there's no tomorrow. Number one, it's illegal what you've done. The voters should have approved the movement of that monument. You had no veterans input at all from the veterans' organizations, specifically the American Legion, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, and now the Disabled American Veterans, which are now meeting here. They've also joined the cause. In March of 2020, the American Legion and the Veterans of Foreign Wars sent messages to you all, asking you, please do not move that monument, plan around it. We got one response, this sounds familiar, we got one response, which was, it's been moved before, what's the difference now? The reply that we gave was, number one, it's illegal; number two, why are you moving it? In August of 2020, plans were announced for the park, the monument was going to be moved. Again, the American Legion and the Veterans of Foreign Wars sent you all messages again, please don't move the monument, plan around it. Again, we were ignored. March of 2021, ground was broken, the dedicated area around the monument was destroyed, trees were cut down, library steps demolished, grass removed. March of, April of 2021, after this started, we began a petition drive to put a proposal on the November ballot. In a few weeks, we gathered almost 1,000 signatures on those petitions. They were submitted to the city clerk. The city clerk later advised us, you have enough signatures, you're going to be, the proposal will be put on the ballot. Eh eh. Then the city attorney pops up, language is insufficient, not enough signatures, it's not going to happen. We sued the city. Three attorneys, pro bono, represented us. The Oakland County Court ruled in our favor, proposal was going to be put on the ballot, or you would be found in contempt of court. The city hired outside law firms, PR firm, to overturn the Oakland County decision. The appeals court upheld the decision. You, the planning commission, not wanting to be jailed for contempt of court, voted unanimously to put the proposal on the ballot. The city moved the monument just before Memorial Day illegally, despite us. The American Legion and the VFW advised you that you weren't welcome at a Memorial Day ceremony. You showed up anyhow. This is not political. The American Legion, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, and the Disabled American Veterans have no political affiliation. We do not endorse politics. We're upset, as veterans, that you're not listening to us. Supporters of the city's stance have committed not only verbal assaults on our group, they supported physical assaults, ones in litigation right now. We're asking that the voters of Royal Oak vote for proposal seven. If you've already voted and what you're hearing now changes your mind, go to the city clerk's office, get your absentee ballot, have it destroyed, get a new ballot, and vote for that proposal. Leave that monument alone, don't destroy it any further, put it back where it's supposed to be.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. All right, who's next? In the back.
Commissioner, Commissioners, and Mr. Mayor, distinguished citizens of Royal Oak. I had a whole speech written, oh, I'm sorry, Tom Roth, 2326 Marywood Drive, Royal Oak. I put together a whole speech I was going to go through today. Then on the way here, one of the people that was at our meeting we had on Thursday with all of you, well, most of you, sent me an email. So I'm going to read your email, because I feel we should listen to the voice of the From my research today, here's what I found out. Very startling when comparing the sorry lot of Royal Oak. This is what I would have presented tonight, but I cannot make it. I attended Thursday night's Neighborhood Association gathering of the incumbents and opponents. Knowing what I do about the city's budget, I was astonished to listen to you indicate that the city's dismal $250 million deficit was not of concern due to the AA3 bond rating. You said the city budget wasn't like a family budget. There may be some truth to that. However, what you failed to say is that you gave $5 million to a favored developer. What you failed to say is that you sold a $2.5 million fair market value parking lot to the same favored developer for $1. What you failed to say is that you give contracts to favored developers without a bidding process costing millions. What you failed to say is how we compare to other cities. I pulled four nearby cities at random to look into their budgets. Here's what I found. Within the city of Troy, population just shy of 84,000, they have a general fund balance of $29,580,000. City of Rochester Hills, 74,000, they have a general fund balance of $17.7 million. Sterling Heights, 132,476 citizens, $42,193,550. And finally, Oak Park, 29,726 residents, $4.646 million in general fund balance. In light of this evidence, how can you possibly sit there and say, with our $250 million debt and $79 million annual deficit, that Royal Oak is in good shape financially? If Jesus were here, he'd overturn your tables and call you a den of thieves. God love you, I do mean that, I'm having a hard time of it. Sincerely, Janice, incidentally, the last name. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
It's been a long day for me today. Oh, by the way, my name is John Woodland. I live at 703 Irving. Been there for 61 years. I've been hanging around the city almost 88 years. I'd like to know why, when you found out, when you moved the Royal Memorial illegally, that the judges said that you got to put it on the ballot, and you said to us, we didn't have to. But the judges said that you had to, and it's going to be on the ballot in a couple of weeks. I want to know why. Why did you move it? Knowing that the Royal Memorial could not be moved without the approval of the people. You ignored that law. It's that when it's syndicated properly, as I said in the past, it has the same covers at Memorial Park on Woodward and 13. It was no big deal when they tried to sell it, they put it on the ballot, and the people said, no, we don't want to sell it. And that was it. But now, you guys moved it anyway. And I'm asking a simple question, why? I haven't heard nothing, and I probably won't. But I still care about you people. I love you guys. I care about you, I care about Royal Oak, I care about the people in Royal Oak. I would have been here all my life and just fixed my heart what you've done to the Royal Memorial. We worked so hard. I mean, we worked hard to raise money to move that. I'm only asking you to do the right thing. Thank you, and God bless you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Woodland.
And God bless America.
All right, anybody else wish to speak tonight at public comment?
My name is Alex Schneider. I live on Knowles. And good evening to all the residents that viewing this program tonight. I hope everybody is watching and listening very carefully what is at stake on November 2nd election. At stake is the very fabric and property values of the residents here in Royal Oak. Whether they are black, white, Asian, Christian, Muslim, Buddhist, or Jewish, it will affect all of them, all of the property owners, because the plans of this city commission is to rezone the current zoning ordinance, thus putting apartment building of high density, multifamily, low-cost in residential neighborhoods, and high-rise apartments on Woodward and major streets. The interesting thing is, I have here a flyer, a brochure, from the candidates on this side of city commission. Five of you, keep the good news coming in Royal Oak by voting for us. The good news is not mentioned here, the good news, nothing about rezoning, nothing about the master plan. Here's one from Mayor Fornier. Keep our community strong. What type of strong community are you going to have? When people invested in purchasing properties, some of them paying mortgage, paying high taxes, they're counting on that property value to remain the same or go up. So what would an apartment building, high-density apartment building in a neighborhood do for that property value? I will submit that property value will collapse. People at home just don't know about it. And our mayor is trying to picture this opposition to rezoning as a racial issue. There's nothing racist about it. It affects every taxpayer in Royal Oak, whether they own a home, they own a condominium, or they invested into investment properties. I agree with previous speaker, Bill Harrison.
Mr. Schneider.
It's a socialist agenda, and if anyone would know about it, it would be me in this room. I came from Ukraine, that was a socialist country, and I can tell you a lot of things about wonders of living in socialism.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. All right, who's next? Anybody else wish to speak tonight? Going once. Mr. Moore, come on up.
Hello, Travis Moore, 906 East Fifth Street. Feels awfully negative in the room tonight, so I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you do and all the truthful information about the park. It looks great. I think it's going to be a wonderful place, and I hope everybody takes a chance to go by and look at it and see how amazing that everything over there is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak tonight? Going once. Going twice. All right, we're going to bring the meeting back to this side of the table. Just a little bit of narrow privilege here tonight, just to kind of touch on a couple things that were mentioned at public comment. So first off, just as a small technicality, public comment, I believe you're supposed to address the commission. I know maybe your intent during campaign season to address the voters, but technically the forum is set up to address the commission on city-related business. So that's just one small thing, just to keep in mind. It is campaign season, it's Halloween, we hear a lot of scary stories around this time, most of them not completely accurate or true. I think in the spirit of being transparent and at the risk of over-communicating, I think it's important that we talk about, especially when we talk about our financial situation, that we, again, try to reiterate some of the things of fact over things that aren't. I mean, the fact is, is Royal Oak is one of the best cities, best managed from a financial point of view in the state. That's indicated by our bond rating, it's indicated by our fund balance, and it's indicated by our ability to leverage capital to get things we need to get done in the community, whether that's fixing our roads, building a well-deserved police station, putting in new parks and recreation. Those things matter, and we're able to do that because we are managing our finances appropriately and to a large extent, very, very well. And that's just not my opinion. That comes from ratings agencies, professionals in Wall Street and all over the country that, you know, buy Royal Oak muni bonds, and they evaluate our financial position, and they say, you guys are doing a great job. I heard the number, $250 million deficit. I don't even know what that means or how that's possible. I mean, our budget is in the tens of millions. And I'm glad that people are starting to do their research and looking around and looking into the financial statement. We hope every resident will do that, and to the extent you're looking at other communities, I think that's amazing. And that helps have a more grounded conversation and grounded feedback to us when we want to do the things that we need to do to serve the community. But I suggest that we also look at past financial statements, we go back to previous years. Most of us have been doing this for a long time. Commissioner Perusch has been doing this in a couple different decades.
Just be careful.
I know some of us have been up here about a decade, and I can tell you, in every single budgeting session, which I wish we had this sort of attendance at our budgeting sessions, this would really be an important thing. We get almost no feedback at our budgeting sessions, but if you attend those, watch those, you'll find that in every case, we talk about the forward-looking statements. And what it is, is it's, we have a conservative approach to budgeting, and it's not a scientific forecast in those out years. And what you'll find is, is that the forecasting policy, you know, does show as if every department head got every single wish that they ever wanted, but by law and by practice, we don't spend beyond our means. We don't create deficits. That's not possible here. We have to have a balanced budget every time we pass the budget. And so, in fact, it was only a couple years ago, we had a city commissioner up here that has since abruptly left the commission unexpectedly, argue that, he argued that we should be getting rid of our fund balance, everything's fine, and we should give money all back to taxpayers. So it's, you know, people that are familiar with how we do the budgeting know that, like you go back to 2016, by 2021, we would have started the year with no money, okay? And we started it with over $13 million. And that's because every year, we make decisions, we plan, we find new opportunities for grants and revenue, we manage expenses within our budget, and you cannot have a deficit and go from back in 2011 to now, from almost going on the verge of fiscal collapse to today having a strong fund balance. It's just not possible if you're generating deficits over 10 years. So, you know, yeah, we're going to have our ups and downs, and just like back in May 2021... And just like back in May, when State Representative Ellison was Mayor Ellison at the time, a new crew of people came in. We focused on finances. We weren't worried about if dancing was going to happen at bars or not. We cared about the financial discipline of the city. And we are able to make the right decisions to go from 55 police officers, I think, up to the 76 today. We still have, you know, there's always transition. So I think it's really important because when we start saying things that are untrue or inaccurate, or we don't know what we're talking about when it comes to city finances, that hurts the entire community. It hurts people's desire to invest here, to buy homes here. It gets people worked up when they shouldn't be worked up. I'm not saying the future is always bright and rosy. What I'm saying is, it takes a lot of hard work from staff, it takes a lot of hard work from this board, a lot of budget meetings that we go through in order to make sure that we remain fiscally sound. And of anything that we've ever done up here, it's always been, every result that we've gotten has because we have managed the budget appropriately, we've managed it effectively, and you just can't deny it. So while there are those, and I think when we talk about this $250 million number, maybe that is dealing with our liabilities. Yeah, we owe retired firefighters, retired police officers money. We owe them their pensions. And so long as they're alive, thank God they are, that's always going to be a liability. We did some things to minimize that cost. We bonded for some of our closed pension programs, took advantage of a county program to really lower, I mean, just like we do in our personal homes. You refinance your mortgage. I didn't pay cash for my first house. So there are things that we do to take advantage of interest rates, but we will always pay those obligations to our retirees because they earned it. It's not a benefit, it's an obligation that we owe them for the work that they did. And as long as I'm up here, we'll always stand behind the people that serve this city, the hard-working women and men. And so, we can't just cherry-pick numbers. We've got to have a comprehensive understanding. And we've got to work together as a community. Because ultimately, what happens is, every year, we look at, what can we afford? What can we do? And we have to make tough choices. And the culmination of those tough choices have put us in a very strong financial position. And so, I just think it was important to underscore that point because not, or spreading information that is misleading related to our finances is harmful to the entire community. And I don't think I have to address the other stuff. It's been addressed at nauseam regarding Centennial Commons. I'll just say that, what a beautiful park. We had the opportunity to get a preview while it was under construction, taking all those parking lots and old buildings and converting it into a green space. The memorial looks absolutely beautiful where it's at. It's accessible 365 days a year now. And I think, you know, when this is all said and done, I think that you'll see the work that's been done and put into it, and it'll be a true community gem. So, you know, we just have to be patient for its completion. All right. Anything else? I took privilege. Sorry, I went on longer than I expected. But it is finance and numbers, and that's kind of my thing. All right. So we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. And I understand we wanted to pull Item C off. Is there anything else on the consent agenda that anyone wishes to pull off at this time? Commissioner Macy.
H.
All right. We've got C and H. Anybody else? All righty. The consent agenda now consists of city commission meeting minutes from October 11th, approval of election worker stipend claims October 19th and 22nd, approval of purchase orders, approval of agreement Michigan Drug Court grant fiscal year 2021, 2022, fire department request to fill vacancy, receive and file non-action items, which consists of the September 2021 investment report, July 2021 revenue and expenditures variance report, and June 2021 revenue and expenditures variance report summary. Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda as read? We have motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy, discussion on the consent agenda. All right. With none on call. Oh. Yes, Commissioner Collo.
Just really quickly, I want to congratulate Judge Manikin, Judge Wittenberg. And yet again, another successful year of the drug sobriety court that they sponsor. This is over 250 people that they've helped over the courses program. And tonight, we're authorizing another grant so they can continue their good work.
Good point, Commissioner Collo. We have a fantastic court staff. Our judges are amazing. And we're very blessed to have both judges working on our behalf every day, and they do a good job. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. This brings us to Item C, which is approval of appointments committee recommendations. The chair, Commissioner Dubb. No?
Commissioner Perush. It was revolving chair.
I heard music back there.
Yeah, and dancing. It's our understanding that there isn't a link to the actual appointments that we're going to make tonight on the agenda, so I'm going to read them. And we also have an additional set of appointments that we have to make. This is the time of year in which the audit review committee, which is a committee of citizens who review the audit process, start their meetings because the audit process is kind of underway. It starts to get underway. And the finance department reached out to the three members of the audit committee, review committee who had been appointed before, only to find out that at least one, perhaps two or more, oh, all three, had moved out of the city in the past year, and therefore, there was no one on the audit review committee. So we kind of had to do a little emergency meeting to look over the applications. And so, we're going to appoint three new people to the audit review committee, too. But let me start back up at the top. To the historic district commission, we're recommending Sean Dunlop for a term ending December 31, 2021. To the rehabilitation board of appeals, we're recommending Eric Lofquist for a term also ending December 31, 2021. To the veterans events committee, we are recommending Robert Gerwa for a term ending December 31, 2022. And to the zoning board of appeals, Samantha Grant for a term ending December 31, 2023. And then, to the audit review committee, we are recommending the appointment of Vincent Brown, Eric Lofquist, and Arvin Sapra. That's a committee that doesn't get a whole lot of applications. There's not a whole lot of interest in reviewing the audit. I don't know why, but we only had, I think, six or seven applications to choose from. But all good talented people, and these are our recommendations. So without any others to add tonight, I will move approval of these recommended appointments to these committees.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubb. Discussion. Listen, I recognize some of the names there, good picks. I'm just surprised with all the October talk about the city budget, we didn't have more applications for the audit review committee.
That is surprising, yes.
All right. Okay, without any discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. That brings us to H, formerly on the consent agenda. Approval of purchase and delivery agreement for refuse 64 gallon carts. Commissioner Macy, no trash talk.
That was a good one, Mayor. So I just thought Mr. Filipski was here and thought he might want to talk about his trash cans and when we're going to start getting them.
Yes, thank you for the evening, Mayor Fornier and Commissioners. If we approve this tonight, they should be ready for delivery estimated the 29th of November, that week of the 29th. It should take a couple of weeks to deliver. It's assuming there's no problems with manufacturing. But I spoke with the cart manufacturer, and they said, if this is approved tonight, they'll start tomorrow. So I'm pretty confident in that. It's the same company that delivered our recycling carts when those were rolled out.
They did a good job.
Yes, they did a great job, yeah. And I know I alluded to it in this memo, and I'll just clarify it right now as well. I may have mentioned that they were part of a Sourcewell contract. Sourcewell is a cooperative bid contract. So to the question of whether this was bid, it was bid in that form.
Any other questions? Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Filipski, what can, can you just remind residents what they can do with their old trash bins, the different options that they have now?
Yeah, sometimes it could be challenging, but I think our refuse crews will be expecting it to see a lot of waste trash cans. But typically, they're kind of actually hard to get rid of. You need to, like, sort of half-destroy the can to make it obvious that it's trash, or else put a sticker on it that says trash, or paint trash on it, and they'll remove it. I would suggest people kind of hold out and see what the capacity is with these carts before they do something like that, but, yeah.
And if they want to use it in the future, they could still use it for, could they use it for trash, or could they also use it for yard waste?
Yep, yep. So this is an option. Every house will get one, but you can still use your trash can if that's what you prefer. And then, these older ones, we actually recommend, A, recycling your old can to try to recycle it if possible, if not, reuse it if it's still in good shape. As you know, you can place the yard waste sticker on the can and use those for your yard waste instead of paper bags.
Thank you. Commissioner Dubb. To that point, can we get some sort of communication out to residents as part of this transition? What can I do, or what should I do with my old trash can? And recycle, reuse it, repurpose it, with the last preference to be, to trash it? I feel like we've been trying to go in a much more green direction. I want to create, you know, 30,000 homes worth of big bulky plastic things going in a landfill somewhere.
For sure, yeah. And in fact, you know, I'm working with the Environmental Advisory Board. We're going to be meeting on this again on Wednesday to discuss that. But we are including literature options in here for those who have. And that specific point wasn't brought up, and it's a very good point. And we will make sure we include that in whatever forum the communication takes. It's still being hashed out, but.
Yeah, put a sticker on the papers that come with it, or even like a really easy, if it's not too expensive to put on them. Commissioner Collo.
I'm just going to say, I see this is a blue can. This is the only thing blue I'm approving of or even thinking of this week in Michigan, first Michigan state.
Well, I'm not taking sides here.
No comments of that kind of rubbish up here.
I do try not to talk about trash, I'm sorry.
We'll see.
Sorry, Mr. Filipski, I interrupted you with one of my many dad jokes that are prescribed for the rest of the evening.
Okay. Hey, that's all I had, unless you had additional questions for me.
Clearly, earlier when we were talking about the animals ordinance, the cat had my tongue. Commissioner Macy.
I'll move approval.
Here we have a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion? Now, these will be really good. I mean, we talked about how great this is, and I think people are going to be very receptive to it. I think when we sent out the recycling carts, I mean, I saw people jumping into the cans taking pictures of themselves. That's how excited they were. So, you know, I mean, maybe if it's trash, it's a little different, but.
You know, if I could, Mayor, one more comment. In case, there will be a bit of opposition to these, to some folks. In the next couple of weeks, we'll open up a registration. And if you absolutely do not want one of these carts, they'll have that option, and we won't even deliver one to you.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Any discussion? All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to Item 9, which is approval of the license agreements for Delamere Boulevard. Ms. Donahue.
Hi, Mayor and City Commissioners. You may recall, a few discussions we've had related to the paved parking areas in the public right-of-way of Delamere Boulevard. The city is resurfacing Delamere in 2022, and staff was looking for direction on how to handle all of the paved parking areas in the right-of-way, which currently are not licensed. So at the April 12, 2021 meeting, the commission approved an angled parking option presented by staff, and that resulted in 55 angled parking spaces. That was pending the approval of individual license agreements, which is what I'm here to bring you tonight. The commission also noted that if not enough properties requested license agreements resulting in 38 or fewer spaces, then staff should actually move ahead and do on-street parallel parking instead. So staff went ahead and prepared individual license agreements and exhibits for all the various properties. We also mailed letters to the properties that currently do not have paved areas in the right-of-way, just to make sure everyone on Delamere was on the same page and knew what was going on. Attorney Jim Razor is representing most or all the licensees that are making requests. And he worked with staff to edit and modify several of the agreements. He also requested new license agreements for parking adjacent to two properties that currently do not have paved areas in the right-of-way. And that's 4305 and 4535 Delamere. So in the resolutions I provided tonight, staff is recommending against approval of the license agreements for these two additional properties, with the idea being that they add stormwater runoff in the public right-of-way. Right now, it's grass area. We'd be converting it to hard surface if approved. As well as just our general policy of, we typically don't recommend license agreements ever unless they're absolutely necessary. So in total, there are 17 license agreement applications that were submitted. All of them together create 53 parking spaces for your consideration. If you exclude the two properties as recommended, we'd have a total of 49 parking spaces approved. Each license agreement indemnifies the city and requires the licensee to provide insurance coverage. The agreements also make the licensee responsible for maintenance, particularly the snow removal. And they allow for the installation of sprinkler systems if desired by the property owners. We also have noted in the agreements that these parking spaces cannot be signed for individual business use. In addition, Mr. Razor has also requested that a special assessment district be created to allow for a payment period for these properties of 15 years. We don't need to go into that too much tonight. I really just wanted to bring it to your attention. Once we have a final list of approved properties, we'll come back to you again with standard resolution one and kind of get that process started to see if you'd like to approve that in the future.
Questions for City Engineer Donahue. Commissioner Dubb.
Thank you, Mayor. Since I remember the lengthy conversation we had about this street, I think I begrudgingly moved forward with this compromised version. And I think one of our criteria was that everybody agreed. So all the property owners have signed their license agreements, or?
I believe we had two that opted out, that are actually happy to go to grass instead of repaving it. So two opted out, 15 opted in, and then we had two extras requesting.
So then those become grass, and?
So, yeah, maybe it's the even trade. You can look at it that way.
And that's not including the two that are being requested to go from grass to new parking spots, correct? Those aren't those two.
Those are those.
Those are those two. So the adjacent property owners are asking for those to be done as well? Is that what you're saying?
I think I've confused what you're asking me, so I'm sorry. So there are two properties that currently have paved areas in the right-of-way, and they want that to go to grass. So they have requested nothing, but we don't need to move forward anything with them. Two new properties that were never on the list to start with are like, everyone else is getting parking, we would like that, too. It would help our business. So they've submitted applications for license agreements to change grass into hard surface.
Which is the opposite of what we want to do, correct?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay. No, I support their recommendation. And then, you said we don't have to discuss the 15-year today, but that was proposed by the petitioners, correct? That's not the sort of standard that we have.
Correct. We could look at this as a road improvement or paving project, and that does have a policy of a 15-year special assessment period. I guess it's more of a legal question or not, but we, as a staff, feel like we would be comfortable recommending that.
And when we offer a payment period of residence for sidewalk improvements, that's usually five, isn't it?
Six years.
Six years. Okay. So maybe somewhere in between there. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I have two questions here. The first one's for Ms. Donahue. Is there any possibility, or have you ever looked at using a permeable pavement moving forward here on some of the parking spots that we have in town?
For Delamere specifically, or in general?
Just in general.
Yes, actually, we're designing South Main Street right now, so the downtown block from 11 Mile to Lincoln. And we are working on, I'm not sure that it's going to be permeable pavement, but something in the parking lane that captures that water and puts it into the beautiful sand that we have there. Delamere is clay, it's not a really great spot to try and do something like that. But downtown, yeah, we have great capacity to do that here.
Perfect. And then, I guess the second question may be for the chief, or it could be for you. But I know one issue that we've heard about on Delamere are people, particularly the car dealership, leaving cars out in the public right-of-way for sale. Can we enforce a no parking 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., or some sort of no parking zone up there?
Yeah, if you create one, we can enforce it.
Oh, great. Let's create one. No, I, so I, you know, we don't do that necessarily tonight. There's a lot of time until this comes up. But at some point, as we talk about the special resolutions behind this, I'd like to talk about no parking on those at night so that businesses aren't continuing to use as their private parking lots.
Anybody else? Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll move the resolution as submitted by staff.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. Commissioner Hunt.
Just want to thank Ms. Donahue for going back and doing the negotiations with Mr. Razor and the petitioners on this. This was a lengthy discussion that we had a few months ago.
And the fact that we, I think we have a happy compromise here, where the business owners can have their parking, and we have some sort of green space and allowing for water runoff to not just hang out on the surfaces. So thank you for your work on this, and I would be supporting this motion.
Very good. Anybody else? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.